Hey Heather, can you hear me?
Yeah, hi. I can't see you yet, but I hear you.
It's coming.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, loud and clear.
I'm gonna mute myself now.
Alright, we're all set. How come we're not on the camera thing?
I don't know why the video didn't start yet.
Oh, there it is. Alright, it's six o'clock and I'd like to call the meeting to order. Could we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone to our September 15th Select Board meeting. We have two Select Board members, attending by Zoom, Lee Dakin and Heather Chase, and you can hear us and everything's okay out there?
It is very good, thank you.
Great. The first item on our agenda is to approve our minutes from our September 1st meeting, and I would entertain a motion to do so.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from September 1st.
Second.
ecosystem's the motion, and Heather Chase is the second. Any corrections, changes, omissions, errors? Anybody got anything on the minutes?
I have none.
I have none.
No.
All good. All those in favor of approving the minutes as written, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed?
No.
Next item is citizens' comments. If there was someone here that would like to address the board regarding an issue that is not on the agenda, now would be the time to do so. Are there any citizens' comments? Amy, does anybody have their hand up or anything? No?
No.
Alright. Not hearing any citizens' comments, we're gonna go to old business. And Julie, can you take us through our old business list?
Sure. On the public safety building, all three departments are now moved into the building completely. Punch list items are being finished by the contractors. The open house is now beneficially scheduled, posters are out. September 26th, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. There will be some different demonstrations done by fire, police, and ambulance for the community, there will be hot dogs, chips, water, and people are welcome to kind of meander through the building. Check it out. It's a little celebration for the opening of new building, long time coming.
When are they gonna get the lettering for the building?
So, yeah, well, as with everything with COVID, right? The lettering is one of the things that's delayed. We were hoping it would be here by the 26th, I don't think that it will be. It looks like it will probably be mid-October. But, we're hoping.
Okay, great.
Yep. So Brookside Bridge, I had told you in your memo that they were gonna be doing the driving the piles on September 24th. That is now in a delay, materials that they need, so that has now been pushed to October 18th. So the bridge will not be open until, it'll be the end of October at this point. The piles need to be driven before the guys, obviously, before the guys can put the deck on. The bridge is ready to go on once those piles are in. And then once the bridge decking is on, or once the bridge is on, and then is decked, they will be fabricating the handrails for the ramp. So, it'll be the end of October, beginning of November, before the bridge is officially open for public use, but it is coming.
When are they driving? When are they driving?
Right now, they're saying October 18th. We're hoping if the materials come sooner, they will do it sooner. But, the materials that come for that, come from Canada. And so, like everything else, there are delays in getting those materials.
Thanks, Julie.
You're welcome. Act 250, so the appeal has been scheduled for court date of September 23rd. I will be going up to Jim Goss's office in Rutland. The hearing will be via WebEx. All clients are to be in their attorney's offices to attend the WebEx. So I will be up there. They are asking for a school board member, a representative from the school board, who can speak on behalf of the school in the hearing. I will be attending the school board meeting tomorrow night. We are asking that it be Joe Gronberger, who was the chair of the board, but also spoke during the Act 250 hearings initially. They're feeling strongly that the board will appoint Joe to do that. Joe will be going to Rutland with me to attend the hearing. Again, it's the appeal of a couple of conditions. I won't get into details on that at this point. But, that's taking place on the 23rd, so hopefully we will have resolution to that soon. Secondary well, we talked about. Jeff and Naomi and I met, well Naomi had a conversation with Scott Stewart from the state. It was an enlightening conversation, we were very pleased. Again, often it's just a one-on-one conversation, can solve all kinds of miscommunication. So, he was not saying to us that we cannot do it, he just had some other suggestions, which we think are fabulous. But it starts with some more research. Naomi is putting together a cost, she'll be talking to Jeff Hofer, who would be doing the geo part of it. And getting his cost, they'll come back with some numbers of what it would be to do the research, what we would be looking at. Jeff, correct me on any of this if I'm wrong. What we would be doing is research to do a secondary well at the Jeffrey Well site, but also to do further investigation about Canal Street. The numbers, the data that we have is old, and we're not so sure on its reliability at this point. So it would be a little more research, a little more probing there with test sites to see if we can find more water, more resources in that backup well. So, that's kind of what the money would be used for. I'll come back to you once we get a quote from Naomi and Jeff Hofer.
Right, the problem with the Canal Street well is it doesn't have enough volume to, for our needs, just to run on a daily basis. But, one of the suggestions was to drill some test wells deeper and see if there's more water, a little deeper, to be had that will meet our volume needs. So that would be a lot better if it did work, so.
Do we have observation wells in that area, around both wells?
We do at Jeffrey Well. There isn't one on Canal Street. And there should be a couple there, so they can check that, so.
So we're gonna start with more information. He was very clear with Naomi that he is giving us the tools to help him say yes. So it's not that it's a no, you cannot have a secondary well at Jeffrey Well. It was, this is what we need in order to say yes to you. Which is always helpful, you know, they're working with us, so that was good. And then lastly, ARPA funding. We have received the first 50% of the county money has come in. Remaining 50% of both pots of money will be in summer of '22. We need to now have some kind of a public meeting. There are a couple of things that I am attending in October that talk, the final guidance is kind of coming out now from Congress. So, there's a couple of meetings I'm attending in October that are gonna give more clarity on how funds can be used in the process. So I'm proposing, instead of doing it mid-October, let's do it at the beginning of November, so that I have all the information that we need. I don't know if you want to do that at your first November meeting, or if you'd like to have that a separate night. Entirely up to you, your preference.
Well, I guess, once you get the information regarding where it could be spent and stuff, we could figure out exactly what meeting, or whether it's a special meeting or just tack it on to a regular meeting.
So we'll talk about it in October then.
Sure. When you talk about 50% of the money, what amounts are that?
So, the first pot of money, the 50%, was 153-ish thousand. The second pot of money was 290-something thousand, I don't have the exact figures. Our total pot is somewhere in the 800 to 900,000 range total. It's gonna be a little less, it sounds like. So we've got 150 and just about 3, it's like a little less than 3.
And some of it is the regional money, and some of it is just the regular money that came in on the ARPA, is that right?
So the ARPA money came to towns in two pots. The ones that was a direct allocation to municipalities, and then the ones that were coming to county governments, because most states have the county government, remember that whole debacle with the two judges and Baltimore? So, the state has said, okay, we're gonna meet the judges' needs, and is releasing that money to the towns. They're saying that county money does, is in fact, gonna pass through to the municipalities, which is the larger chunk of money, so.
And they all have the same, or the same restrictions as far as spending goes?
Yeah, the guidance over them is the same.
Is both, whether it's county or whether it's straight through?
Correct, and whether it's a municipality or the state. The state has the same restrictions that the towns do, on the use of that funding. And the state is just now having, starting their protections about what programs they're gonna fund, what grant programs they're gonna fund. Because they have to pass their money through to towns, so.
And there's a timeline on it, 2026, I believe?
So it needs to be, you need to have it obligated by December 31st, 2024. It needs to be fully expended by December 31st, 2026. So we have some time, there's no hurry.
Thanks.
That's all I have. Oh. So, the, sorry. The, as you all know, and I know this in the Andover board members that are here, what I would like to do, there was an article written in a, I don't know what all transpired at this meeting, but obviously some confusion. So I would like to email their board chair, set a joint meeting with both full boards as much as possible, or at least a majority of both boards. Have our fire chief, our ambulance chief, and a gentleman from the, I can't remember his name, from the Ramat Fire Academy.
From the state?
Come and just talk about what is mutual aid? How do fire departments work? I think there's a lot of lack of understanding of how things work, decisions that we have, decisions that we don't have. All of the rules in the operating of a fire department and a police department is all state law. There's not a lot of discretion in things, and I think there's not a good understanding of that. So I think it would be prudent to have both boards come together and kind of talk this whole situation through. The gentleman from Northshire will be sending me over a sample of what their contracts look like, so we could have that discussion. That's where we left the last meeting, was that I would be doing the research on the contracts. So, I am doing that, and should have some answers. So, not knowing if you want to do that, your first meeting in October. I do know that your first meeting in October, our EMT classes will have started. So our fire chief and ambulance chief would not be able to be here, and I think it's critical that they are here. So I don't know if we could set that meeting with Andover, and I can certainly talk to their board chair about finding an alternate night.
I mean, even if it's not on a regular scheduled meeting night,
Right, just setting a different night.
Whatever works for both boards, so we can get together. And I think it's gonna be really important that we have as many people there that can answer these questions that are gonna come up.
Agreed.
To everybody's benefit and stuff, because... I'm sorry, I thought I heard something.
Oh, I just said I agree with that.
Oh. Your voice is right behind me, so I'm catching it now.
Okay, so I will email their board chair and get that going.
Great. Anybody else have anything on old business? Next item on our agenda is GM School Board Director's position. Because of the way the system works now, we have a little bit of influence, not influence, but a little... We're part of the process as far as the appointments go to the school board. And we have two candidates that are interested in this position right here. They're with us tonight, and I thought it would be helpful for them to meet the community, and talk to the board, and talk to the community, and present themselves. What we do as a board, after we have our discussion with them, we'll pass them on to the school board, and they would make the final decision with our recommendation. And our recommendation could be all are acceptable, none are acceptable, or one in particular is acceptable. And that would be a board choice on that. So at this point...
Arnie, could I just ask a question? So the agenda says GM School Board Director position, is that?
Yeah.
So what does that mean?
The school board member.
Okay, so it's not necessarily... It's, okay, I get it. Okay, thank you.
And it's for a position that was vacated by Jeannie Wade, because she took a job with the elementary school, I believe. And what, the way it would work is the appointment would be until March, and then that person would have to run for reelection for the remainder of the term. That, and I believe, I think she had another two years left, I forget her one year. It's a three-year, it was a three-year term. So there's another year or two. So that's basically how it would work. The two candidates are here, and what I would ask to start off with is Catherine Murphy's... Catherine Murphy is here as one of the candidates. And to please maybe just tell us a little bit about yourself, and why you're interested in becoming a school board member. And you have to get up to the microphone, so we can...
Okay. It's fine. No worries. So I am extremely short, that's really high. So my name's Catherine Murphy, I'm a Chester resident, and I have three children within the district. I've attended a few school board meetings, and I think my desire to be on the school board comes from a place of positivity, and, you know, the ever-changing flow of things. Everything is changing with COVID, it puts a lot of people in different, difficult situations with difficult decisions to be made. And I'd like to be a positive influence on the board, and be able to separate personal and professional beliefs while doing that.
That's great. Anybody on the board have any questions for Catherine?
Thank you for stepping up.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Catherine. The second candidate that we have for the position is a familiar face, Mr. Ben Whalen. Can you please step forward and tell us a little bit about yourself, and why you're interested in the school board position?
I see why everyone has always had problems with this now.
It's upside down, yeah, turn that thing around.
Alright, we'll make it work. Alright, hi, I'm Ben Whalen. So my history of Chester is born and raised here. I also have several kids within the district, and have previously been a member of the Select Board, and have worked throughout the town in different positions. I am currently on the fire department, and president of Yosemite Engine Company. My interest in this was, it's an open spot, it's something I have always had interest in. And the ability to kind of test those waters out for that time period to decide if it's something I really want to fully invest for the long term in, it's kind of that opportunity. So, I have no... No, boy.
Agenda?
No agenda, thank you, Jeff. I have no agenda, I'm there to be a voice of reason, look at things with an open mind. I think it's a really, it's a diverse group that in my opinion has had some difficulties at times. And I think I could be a good voice in that group to help them move forward in the future.
Thanks, Ben, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ben.
No questions for Mr. Whalen? No?
Well, actually, I have, how many directors are there on the board?
I think it's 11?
It's either nine or 11, they're not all from Chester, obviously. There's some from Andover, some from Cavendish, one from Baltimore. Chester has the most representation, because we have the largest number of students. It's either nine or 11.
And I think it's, the reason that we're part of the process is because it is a Chester director that is being, you know, so they want the community input for it. Whereas if it was Cavendish, Cavendish would be going through this and stuff, or whatever, which is why I guess we're here for this. So at this point, all we, do we need a motion on this, or do we just send them forward?
You're just sending them forward.
Right.
So I would think the consensus of the board is that you're both extremely acceptable for the position, and I think we appreciate the fact that you're stepping forward to take this on for the town. Sometimes it's hard to find people to volunteer to do things, and it is a big commitment. And I think it's very well appreciated that you're seeking to do this. So at this point, I think we're just gonna send you on, and the school board will make the final decision as far as the appointment goes, and that's tomorrow night?
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night? I mean, good luck.
I'll echo Arnie's sentiments.
Go ahead.
Thank you both for stepping up.
Good luck!
Good luck and have fun.
I don't think that's the reason you're doing it, but yeah. Sometimes, it could be interesting.
It turns out to be more fun than you think.
Thanks again for both of yous, appreciate it. And Ben, you're on the next item on our agenda anyway, so I guess you're not going too far. And basically, it's an update on the Yosemite Engine Company and their relationship with the new building. Is that correct? And can you fill us in on that, or Ben, you're gonna fill us in on that?
Ben is gonna talk to you, go ahead. So Ben, we decided that it would be appropriate for Yosemite Engine to come to the Select Board and just kind of get it out there, get it public before the open house, so that people in the community can understand that the volume that Yosemite Engine has donated to the interior of the building, the taxpayers did not pay for a lot of the furnishings. That was fundraised between Yosemite Engine, Chester Rescue, and police used forfeiture funding. It is not hitting the tax base. And I, Ben is gonna talk about the Yosemite Engine piece, because it is the bigger piece, but I think it's important for the community to know.
Excellent.
Alright, so obviously, I think most of you are familiar with the engine company and what our purpose is, but for everybody out in the world, the mission of the Yosemite Engine Company is to essentially goodwill and benefit for the Chester Fire Department and the town of Chester, whether it be equipment, training, public relations, so on. So obviously, we have a new building, and one of the big topics that was always around that is what is, how does that furnishings for get paid for? And as you walk into that building, you see a building that is pretty well furnished. And so, I think what we need to be transparent about is how much fundraising from all of those entities has done for the entire, the town, and the building itself. So, I certainly have a larger breakdown, but right now, just on furnishings alone, and the air conditioning on the ambulance and fire department side, because that was cut out due to cost, we are at almost $37,000. So, that's not a small number by any means. And so that's, you know, it's not funny, but we spend a lot of time fundraising. We've spent a lot of time fundraising on fundraisers that don't work. But we also, we do pretty well, but within those, we try and really be good to the communities. And by communities, Christmas trees, for instance. We don't take consideration if you're from Andover, Chester, anywhere. If you can't afford a Christmas tree, you send me a message, we chat with you, we figure it out, we make sure you have a Christmas tree that you can take home with you. We certainly have, so we have good luck with Christmas trees. We don't make much off of the Christmas trees, as a FYI to everyone. With COVID pricing, our prices are going up this year. But we also do well with the Fall Festival. People seem to come around and listen to us banter at each other about making hot dogs and other stuff. And we do well through our, we do a calendar raffle every year. And we also do, we do send out a letter for donations once a year. So, you know, right now with the building itself, so again, we're at 37,000, but all of the furnishing that you will see within the two officers' offices, the storage room, the kitchen, the classroom, they're all really great things. I think one thing that definitely concerned me when I walked in is there's TVs in there, and they are not simply TVs for watching TV, they are for our dispatch to be able to see what's going on, and it gives us mapping that's right in our offices, and can tell us the information about the calls, and so on. Again, all engine company. So, what we are gonna try and do for the open house is make it so that we do have some tags on lots of those items, and then have a list out as well, so that as people walk through, it's not instantly, you know, they see where that came from, and that it's not coming out of the bond for the building, it's not coming from the tax base, it's coming from our fundraising. And I will say, I hope that we can do a Select Board meeting inside the classroom at some point, and you guys get a chance to check that out. I think that's something that townwide, people will and should use. So, it's a great space, and learning and training is great. So just kind of in a closing mark, you know, between equipment, training, fire safety to the schools, and so on, at this point, since in the past eight years, we've donated almost $194,000.
In the course of how many years?
Eight years.
Wow.
And obviously, that's not cash donations, that is, that's our hard work, that's us coming up with these things and going that. And, you know, the message that we've made clear throughout is that that money is not to... It's not to make it so the fire department doesn't have a budget, that's not our mission. It's to promote doing, having better equipment, being ready to respond to whatever it is we need to respond to. So, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much.
Anytime.
Thank you, Ben.
That's amazing.
Yeah, it is, it's great.
For a small town to have an organization that could raise that kind of cash, and has that much backing and support from people around here in this area and stuff, that's, it's phenomenal.
And I do want to throw out there, and I don't know their numbers, but I do know the rescue squad has also contributed immensely on parts of the building. And we have, you know, we've talked to them, hey, well, can we split this, so on? And they have certainly jumped in on things. And whether it's, you know, I think they've bought in the new defibrillator, which is, you know, I think we're probably looking at 30 grand for that a couple of times, helping out with ambulances and so on. So I think, you know, people see the budget, but having these strong fundraising entities that are here to support the town are huge, so.
Thank you very much, Ben.
Anytime.
And it's nice that it's broken out, because it always, it hasn't always been like that. And I know it takes some work, but appreciate all the effort to support the firemen and first responders, thank you.
Thank you, Heather.
And it is a great, it is a great space, when you guys tour the building and see the training room that is there. I mean, it's already a catalyst for, we are hosting our first...
I can't hear Julie.
We can't hear you, I think it's Julie.
Yes, can you hear me now?
No, not very well.
No, my mic's not on.
Here, I'll train you.
Thank you.
Is that better?
Oh, very better.
That's right, I didn't have the mic. So when you guys see the new training room, you'll see, I mean, it is a catalyst for some really great things. You know, we are already hosting, starting, I think it's next Wednesday, our very first in-house EMT class. We are hosting, we've got 13, 13 or 18 people signed up for the EMR First Responder Program for Chester, that's gonna grow that department. We have eight EMTs with a couple on reserve, just in case we get a couple more spots, in case London Air gives a couple more spots. But, you know, fire training classes can be held here now. Other ambulance service things, you know, when any town department has a training that it needs to do, it can go there. I mean, it's a huge benefit to growing these services, but not just Chester, it's for the region. You know, regional classes could be held here, because we've got a great space now that can house that, and we've got the, thanks to the Yosemite Engine Company, we've got the up-to-date equipment that is needed to house those. So, it's really a good program for us. It's important.
And Julie, for years, we've been looking at regionalization, so that fits right into that, which is really exciting that we can help other communities in the region.
Exactly, and when it comes to training, some of the things I've been on is they are talking about doing more, regionalizing the training opportunities that are around, and that is important. You know, when Chester's doing a training for Cavendish, and Lundon Dairy, and whoever else needs to come over, to come over, and we do that to some degree anyways, but it will be nice for Chester to be able to host some of those things, so.
Well, I think it's, it's important that, so for transparency for everyone, two hats. So I am obviously the president of the, the engine company, I am also the assistant fire chief in Chester. To be clear about the engine company, we do not report to the town, we do not report to the fire chief. We are our own not-for-profit organization, so on. But as far as, you know, one, one great thing about the, the fire department and the fire service is, you know, the, the family aspect of it, but we all work together, we all have the same goals and missions. So, you know, we are, if Ludlow had a building fire right now, they'd be requesting us mutual aid before they got on scene, just because that's the, the working relationship we have with those, those other agencies out there. So it's work, if you work together, train together, that's how it works.
It's gonna be a huge plus for the whole area, and especially for our town. And when I think back to your old digs and the condition that you did all those years of service and work from, and the, the new facilities that you have, it's, it's been a long time coming. You've struggled in that old building for many years, and the state was ready to shut it down on us. So it's, it's thankful that it all came out the way it did, and that building's gonna work out fantastic.
Also, I think one point that's been kind of missed, and some people assume it, but, I mean, that facility's, if we had another Irene situation, it would be a command center, and it would be, you know, that's where it would be. That's one reason why that land got purchased, because the center of Chester, pretty much, where you can come in from three different directions, and it would be, you know, that would be the command, could be a command center, and could be an emergency shelter. So that's an added thing.
It's an add, it's, you know, it's a great, it's a great space, and, you know, there's, even on a statewide, we are, you know, if, when the last Hurricane Henri was, was coming through, you know, the Emergency Operations Center and, and VEM were reaching out saying, hey, can you guys be available for this part of the state if, if we need you? So we are, you know, that's, that's where we're being looked at. So that's, it's great for us as a community.
Nice. Thanks again for everything, Ben, and your organization.
Thank you very much.
Since we're covering emergency services, Julie, can you take us to our ambulance billing rates?
Sure, so the ambulance billing rates, we haven't looked at in a number of years. We are switching, and, and Amy, you pipe in here at any point, okay? Amy is the one who's done this research for me. So we have switched over to a external billing company. We have found that with ambulance revenue, we just don't have the resources to collect at the level that we believe we could, so a fair amount was getting written off. Some gets written off every year anyway, because Medicare will only pay a certain amount, VA will only pay a certain amount, but there was other, that, that was collectible. Again, we just don't have the resources or the know-how to, to run a collection agency here. So we have gone to a company called Comstar. They deal with, they do ambulance billing for municipalities in multiple states. Many of our partnering or our neighboring ambulance services use them as well. The, their payment is 3%, Amy? 5% of what they collect, which if they, we went back a few years, if they collected, you know, that 5%, if they'd collected everything, would equal what we've been paying for the program to do the collection. So either way, we're ahead. So it, it, it doesn't cost us anymore, it'll actually probably generate greater revenue for us. So one of the things that they brought to Amy's attention was that our billing rates are low. We are, I think, 48% below, below the state average for the towns that they gave us the numbers for. So back in 2017, we believed the, the conversation at that point, when we raised the rates then, was that we would be increasing them at an average of 3%. That has not happened. So even had we been increasing them at an average of 3%, we would still be way below the state average. We are not looking to double our rates. What we are looking to do is, I asked Amy to bring the number to the midpoint between where we are now and what other towns are billing. And so that is what you have in your spreadsheet that Amy prepared. So we are looking to raise our rates to that amount. We would hold those and revisit again in probably 20, probably 23, to do another increase at that point. But, you know, our ambulance service is taxpayer-funded, but as much as it can be call-based funded, that's what we want. So I'll just leave it at that, unless you have questions.
I mean, we did talk about this quite a few years back, and like you said, it had gone up that 3% then, we had left it, and we didn't revisit it.
Correct.
But I think it's important that we get back to the cost, and the cost to provide the services is important.
Yep.
And the fact that we're that much lower than the average.
Right.
Never mind the high end.
Right.
Is, is, you know, that's some important information to have, and I think the.
That's just Vermont, that's not compared to other.
Yeah.
The whole picture of who they bill for, they were way below, I mean, some, for a BLS, for some of them.
We can't hear that.
Hang in a second. Amy, you're gonna have to get to a microphone, I think.
I know, I'm sorry. So the, the rates that we're looking at for the others were for Vermont only, but they gave us averages for their, for everyone that they bill for around the whole country, and the average for the BLS alone was like $2,000.
Wow.
So we're like way below the national average of what, who they bill for.
And it's important, because as taxpayers, we subsidize this organization.
Correct.
And it's, it's hard to expect the taxpayers to foot the bill for all this when it should be distributed for the people that we're providing the services to, and it's still a decent, reasonable rate also, so.
Correct.
It makes sense.
I have a question about our former collection process and the new one. And that relates to whether there's, or whether we've given Comstar, is that there? Whether we've given them any leeway in determining if there's a needs-based discount for somebody? So say somebody calls the ambulance, and, you know, the bill would be $1,000, but they can't pay it. How did we deal with that? Sorry, Amy.
Amy's been doing the negotiating, she knows the real, the real details, so we're gonna let her answer them.
So what they said with that is, they would present it to us to make a decision. So if somebody came and said they had a $1,000 bill, and they could make $10 a month payments, they would present that to us, and we would make the decision, and more than likely, we would say yes, because we've done that going, yes, you know, prior to now, we've done, that's what we've done.
This is not looking to be a, you know, pay it or we're coming after you.
Right.
We're, we're not changing our philosophies in that regard.
Yeah.
But there, we just feel that there is money that could have been collected. Collection of ambulance revenue is a very complicated business.
It is.
Very complicated business as to what is allowed, what is not allowed, the percentages. It, it really, everybody is going to an external, external resource because of what is involved. You know, VA is only required to pay a certain rate, Medicare is only required to pay a certain rate, you're only allowed to bill a certain rate for some company, I mean, it's, it's just, it's complex.
Well, once you get insurance companies involved, their main goal is to pay out as little as possible.
Yeah.
So I think it helps to have an agency that knows the ropes and how to get, how to do things to collect what's fair, and what's equitable, and what's deserved for the town.
And we should see, again, the cost of having them is not any more than what we were paying for a program that we needed to have. So, and, you know, if their rates go higher than that program, then it's because they're collecting higher, which means our revenues go up. So it's a win, it's a win-win for us.
Yeah.
And will we be posting those rates online, so people know what they're?
These rates?
Yeah.
We can certainly up, I don't know, are they on our website now?
No, I don't think so.
I don't think so, we certainly could, there's nothing private about them.
Yeah.
I think we should, just to let people know what potential fee would be.
Yeah, I think we should, should show all three of these, the, the state average and, and where we're at and where we want to be, so.
Sure.
Okay.
And I think maintaining that personal part of it as far as, when you go to that, that question you had, Lee, about that, that's, that's an important part too, because if people, we've always acted that way. If, you know, you can't afford it, you don't have the money, we're not, we're not here to chase you down to the bank and take your house or anything like that. It's to provide a service as a community.
And that's, and that's what it means to be a neighbor, is to take care of your neighbor when they're.
Exactly. So we would need a motion to authorize Arnie to sign the report.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
I'm not sure who I called, made the motion. Heather, you made the motion?
Yeah, but you can give it to Lee Daken.
Lee Daken made the motion, Lee Gustafson seconded it. Any further discussion on it? All those in favor of approving the motion as stated, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? This is the original.
That's the original, yes, please.
When does this organization take over for the, the billing?
October 1st.
October 1st?
Yep.
Great.
Good. Only Arnie needs to sign this?
Yeah.
Just me, Lee, on this one.
Okay, great.
Next item on our agenda is our highway garage contract approval. I guess our attorney has gone through it, and is, everybody's happy that's been involved with this, of what it says and what it covers and what it doesn't?
Yes. Yes. Lee Gustafson called me today and did have a question. The, on the sprinkler system, there's a couple different numbers. Okay, so I reached out to Craig. The reason that it is 49 instead of not, instead of 42, is because the 42 is just for that company. But there is also the six-inch line, I'm gonna just read it. I'm gonna screw it up, I don't understand this language. The sprinkler line item in Exhibit A includes an engineering fee to design the water service entrance and installing a new six-inch water main from outside the building into the new sprinkler room. They replaced the water service at the existing building, he thought it meant we replaced it all the way into the building, but we didn't, it came to the outside of the building. So they need to bring the six-inch into the building and into the sprinkler room.
We didn't know what they were, where they were gonna go.
Exactly, exactly. So that's why there's extra money added in to do that. That's, that's the difference in the cost, Lee.
But it's not the 37,000.
No, it's not the 37, sorry.
35.
Nope. That was an old, that 37, they just didn't change it in the line. That was the old number, way back, a year and a half ago.
That happens.
Yep, it does.
What's the timeframe on this, Julie?
They are, they are starting. Kirby and I met with them beginning of the week. Kirby found some areas where he is already willing to, really wanting to make some changes. Kirby's been sitting down with the guys around the plans and having some discussions about what really makes sense for them. So they're doing a few things differently, which is great. It needs to be their space, their working space, so. And actually, some of the stuff they're changing is, you know, gonna make, gonna save us some money, actually. The one piece that we will probably be back to talk to you about is the, the modenes.
Heaters.
The, the modenes, okay. So those things are like, like were put in when the earth's crust was cooling. Like those things are old.
Yeah, when, 1970, when the building was built.
Those things are, when you look up at them, you're like, what the heck, half of them don't work. Well, the replacement of those modenes, for whatever reason, was not, it was something that was cut, apparently, early on. They're gonna run the new wiring to the modenes, but replacing them would probably be a good idea. Unfortunately, the cost to do that is in the 30,000s. So we are gonna plan to run the wiring to them and kind of see where we come out as the project is developing. And replacing those is something we could do at a later time, I am being told, as long as we run that new wiring while they're doing the wiring. So we may be back with that, we'll see how the project shakes out.
So is, is that still the whole system connected to the outdoor boiler?
Yes.
Are there two fuel systems for that, or just the one? So there's something other than the outdoor boiler that would provide heat?
It's wood, and it has a gas injection unit on it with, with a few, gas tank out there, but to my knowledge, it's never been used.
Okay.
So.
There is a backup to the outdoor wood boiler?
It was required when we put it in.
But it's never been used?
No.
Wow. Wonder if it still works?
Well, it probably needs maintenance.
Sometimes when your things just sit around for a long time.
It's the worst thing for them.
Yeah.
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 We, I know we don't know what we could use ARPA money for, but is this a possibility, maybe?
No.
No way?
No. No, nothing infrastructure-related.
Really?
Not, well, I shouldn't say nothing infrastructure. Highway infrastructure, no, because Congress is currently looking to spend another $3 trillion to give us infrastructure money. We won't go, we won't go down that road.
Water and wastewater?
Water and wastewater, and that's what I'm saying, you can't say no infrastructure. Water, wastewater, infrastructure, yes, broadband, yes.
But not.
And infrastructure that would relate, or that would, I'm gonna say this wrong, infrastructure that can respond to the pandemic.
Okay, I, I ask for wastewater, because obviously, we gotta put in the, the grit oil separator and another manhole out there to hook it into the floor drains.
I will ask.
I, and I actually.
That's a good thought.
I don't have a price on that yet, but it's, I've sent out the plans to, to get prices.
Well, we thought it was, would be about 15 grand.
Yeah.
So it's a, it's some money. Let me ask, let me ask.
Hooked into sewer, I mean, that's where it's heading, right?
Exactly.
Yeah, and that's, it's designed to go into our sewer, and we have to have the grit oil separator before it goes in there.
And you can use it for money, if it's a project that meets the clean water.
Right.
Program, then you can, then, then ARPA money can be used for it, so I'm gonna ask a specific question.
It was designed by, what's his name, the engineer that designed it, so it's gotta be clean water certified, so.
Something to work.
I'm gonna ask, it's 15 grand, I mean, I'm, I'm gonna ask, I'll ask, okay.
Good, thank you, Julie.
Yeah.
Anyone have any questions or comments regarding the contract?
I thought it was really hard to read.
It's small letters.
I think that's why we have.
They're really tall letters.
That's why we have Jim.
Yeah. I mean, Lee, are you gonna be involved with this project like you were with the emergency service building also?
I don't know. Sure.
I call all of you when I need help, so whoever.
Thanks, Lee. You're welcome.
So we need a motion to authorize you to sign the clean version that's downstairs in my office.
So I'll make a motion for Arnie.
To authorize the chair to sign the construction document, what do you want to call it?
Second it. You haven't got it signed yet?
No, somebody has to make the motion.
I did.
You just did.
You weren't paying attention.
Lee Gustafson's the motion, Jeff Holden's the second. Any further discussion on this?
It's gonna be great when it's done.
Yeah, it sure is, I'm, I'm really excited about it.
They have, they're, they're gonna, they, they got the extra bays from the fire department, which is gonna help get the equipment inside, and the building's gonna be. is going to help get the equipment inside. And the building's going to be, I guess they won't be able to condemn it anymore, which was-
Hallelujah.
Exactly.
Once we get the sprinkler in.
Yep.
All those in favor of approving the motion, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Do you have the document there?
I have it downstairs.
All right, I'll stop it.
I didn't bother to print it, just in case there were changes.
A little housekeeping. It's a third-class liquor license for the pizza stone. And I guess this is, is this just a renewal on this one? But I, because I know she's expanding towards the back there.
I think this is new.
This is new.
I believe that this is new.
This whole configuration of this request, the third-class liquor license, is different. Has the state made a whole different change?
Yeah, there is a different process. The application is also different, Lee, and it's a new application than the standard one that's the one page that you sign.
Right.
That's why it looks different.
Because I was confused when I read 13 Rockingham Hill Road in Rockingham, Vermont, and I thought, wait a minute, this is Route 11 in Chester.
That's where she lives.
But that's her, that's her home. I mean, I read through it, and that's her residence, I guess.
Yeah. It's because it's a first application, that's why. That's why it looks different.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, what changed? So, it's because she's expanding in the back, or is it because its ownership changed?
I know. I think it's because there's expansion in the back. I think it's a greater area that it's applying to.
She let her third-class liquor license lapse.
What was that again, Amy?
Her third class.
Lapsed, so she had to reapply.
Oh, it lapsed?
Her third-class liquor license la, lapsed. But isn't she also expanding?
Yeah.
It's a bigger area or something.
The expansion, because the front part's supposed to be technically a different business.
Oh.
Making the, to take out pizzas and stuff.
Oh, okay.
And the back is just going to be the, you know, the pizza stone where they serve and have entertainment.
Okay, all right. So, this is really because it lapsed?
Yeah.
Okay. Got it.
The police chief, all set with it, I'm pretty happy with it.
Yeah, Debbie checks with them.
On page two, there's nothing filled out except the address of the facility itself. But, you know, have you registered the corporation or trade name with the town, or the Secretary of State? I mean, or has she filled out everything that she's supposed to fill out?
I'm assuming that Debbie checks that.
Okay.
This comes through the town clerk to us. So, Debbie usually goes through everything.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep.
So, this is on the last page, that's it for the signature?
Yeah.
Do you need us to come in for any signatures, Julie?
It's up to you. We've got three here, so up to you.
But are there warrants, too?
There are warrants. Again, we have three signatures, but if you want to sign them, I'll have everybody hold off, and you can come in tomorrow.
Well, I can come in tomorrow, but no need.
Yep, whatever you want.
All set, Lee?
All set. Thank you.
Oh, I guess I was on mute. I'll try to get down to the town hall tomorrow.
Okay.
Future agenda items and new business. I know we have a cemetery deed that we need to take care of, but other than that, future agenda items. Anybody have any suggestions or concerns or anything they want?
Sounds like we're going to have a couple of special meetings, one with the Andover Select Board.
Yeah.
And one with, for the public for-
ARPA.
Yeah.
The ARPA funding, yeah, that'll be coming. We'll be getting into the budget very soon.
Goodie.
You know, it might be good before the public hearing to have the select board understand, you know, like a 15, 20-minute presentation, Julie, not like a long, long one, of how we can spend the funds, so we can be somewhat creative in our thinking.
Absolutely. The department heads at this time are already working on their thoughts of different needs. We, our internal goal is not to create new projects, but to use this funding to maybe take care of some things that are on the list, which then equates to some savings down the road for taxpayers. That's really what we want, is this to get into the community as much as possible, to offset taxes as much as possible. So, we'll be presenting those to you as well, but we don't want to just do it, whatever the department heads want. We want to hear from the community, too.
Right. And if we have an understanding beforehand in a select board meeting, then maybe more creative ideas could come from the town, too.
Sure. Will do.
But it's still like, at some point, to talk about parking on the green.
A parking plan, yeah.
So, I don't know when it's good for that, but it just seems like we probably ought to be hitting that sooner rather than later.
Yeah.
Wait, what do you mean? I don't understand.
I'll have a good idea that's coming up.
We've had discussions, or we've mentioned it before, about just the general parking, business parking on the green, the configuration, I guess, and how many sites we have, or how many parkings. Because it comes up quite often from business owners, that there isn't enough parking, I guess, but it'd be worth to see what we have, and what are the needs, and get some more data regarding that, I would think.
Yeah, I think that would be great, because it seems to me it's very cyclical. It's, you know, during different times of the year, maybe, but it, yeah. I go by there frequently, and many times, there's nobody on either side of the highway, whether it's on the far, you know, the inside of the green, or on heading west, no cars parking, so.
So, we could put it in there someplace in the future?
Sure. Yep.
On your list?
I do have, I do have it on there, but it kind of keeps getting moved.
And that's fine. You know, at this point, I'm not seeing it as a huge issue.
Yeah.
But I think it's something that we should be discussing and planning for in the future, because the whole point of our, I don't know if it's marketing or whatever, but bringing Chester to the community, or, you know, hoping people come here, we're going to have to be prepared for that.
Absolutely. And we are seeing that. I mean, we've got, we, there are a lot more people around and a lot more people in town, and we are hearing that it's from the marketing efforts. We are hearing that from people. So, we are bringing people to the, to the town. And yes, parking is one thing that just doesn't ever get talked about, you know? So.
There's, I think the, I'm not sure if the closing has happened or not, but the free range is either under contract or very close to it. And the word is that they will be some kind of a cafe open to the public there.
Yep.
Along with the rest of their business that goes there, too. So, there'll be more demand for parking because of that.
Well, talking about the green and ARPA, something popped in my head. We had discussed a while ago about a pump station for the Historical Society in the info booth?
That might be the way to do it.
Is that something that can be put in there, too?
That's a good idea, Jeff.
For ARPA?
Yeah, it could be. Because economic development is a part of it. Economic development is a part of it.
When we, when you go down Copley Street on the left, we used to have a skating rink. I don't know if they still do that, because we have the Pinnacle now. But, you know, there's town-owned some property back there as well. I wonder if that, some, we could start visualizing, excuse me, what it would be like to have some parking area off the green behind, on Copley Street.
Yeah, so we did, Lee, when we moved the ice skating rink over to the Pinnacle, we took, we took down the curb, and what used to be the ice skating rink is now all parking, and there's actually two charging, e-charging stations there.
Oh, really?
So, that is additional parking, and yes, but we don't advertise it, so, you know.
Exactly. There we go. Yeah. Good. Great. Thank you.
Especially the e-charging part of it, the fact that it's there, there's no sign on it.
Well, no, because our signage package is-
Maybe figure out a better way of parking. Now, people just park around.
I think we need to stripe it.
Right.
We need to stripe it.
The most efficient way to get cars in there.
Yeah. I think that's, the striping is really important.
Yep.
So, I guess the parking would be a good discussion. We've already hit it quite a bit, just as a future agenda item. All right. So, we're all set for new business, future agenda items. Budget season is coming up. That's going to be taking up a lot of time. We'll get together with Andover and have a joint meeting and try to resolve some of the issues that have popped over the services on our emergency services, and how that all works. And the next item on our agenda is an executive session to update us on the police complaint. I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second. Now, Lee Gustafson's the motion, and Lee Dakin's the second. Any further discussion on it? All those in favor of going into executive session for an update regarding the police complaint, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. There, this is just an update. There won't be any-